Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is July 12th, 2023. It's 6:00 PM, and I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is a consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So this is Janet. I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, six. Do we have to pay our bills twice?
We could.
Okay, I'll say three, four, and six, and we won't worry about the duplicate payment of number seven.
And is there a second?
Ron, I'll second.
Any questions or anything? Anyone? Ron?
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public open forum? There's no one in the room. Anyone online who would like to speak? Moving right along. Planning Commission report. There was no Planning Commission meeting on July 5th, so the report will be short. Engineer report. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just an update. I anticipate West Freeway Drive to be open next week. I think they intend to finish the striping yet this week, and I've encouraged them to get the road open as soon as possible so that we can get things opened up to the Lamprey Pass and for whatever other uses we want to do with that roadway, so.
And on the same note, Elizabeth, can we figure out how to do a ribbon cutting on that? Should we? Someday when we can all get together, I've got yellow ribbon. And do all that. That's the last phase of our interchange.
Yeah, no kidding.
Over.
So Kevin, do you know what day that is going to be, or what day that?
So I just got a text message. They are going to stripe it tomorrow and do some gravel touch-up on the gravel portion. So it'd be essentially available to open up after that, but I mean, you could conduct your ribbon cutting whenever convenient, you know, even if it's open, you know, just be kind of an official grand opening at that point, I suppose.
So like, maybe this Friday, could we do it? Is everyone, maybe this Friday? Is everyone available if that's, if it's going to be open? Did you say Thursday it'll be done?
I won't be able to post it quick enough for that.
I won't.
Oh.
On Friday I won't be here.
Because we'll all be there. I got you.
Yeah. But I can do Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. I mean, I could do something next week. I'll have enough days for next week to post it.
I think I'm available next week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wed- not Wednesday. Monday or Tuesday.
I'm only available Monday, Tuesday, so.
You are?
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, yep.
Yep, me too.
Doesn't make much difference to me, but Kevin, is it going to be no passing lanes, a double? Double yellow lines?
Yes.
I did come down Lake Drive on a serious note, and they striped all that today. Isn't that nice?
Looks nice. Looks really, I'm so happy with that.
Tuesday is Fall Fest meeting, so Monday would work, though.
Monday, okay. Karen and I will come up with something, and we'll email everybody.
Monday, the 17th. Photo on West Freeway Drive. All right, Kevin, what else?
So just an update. Tomorrow, I've been invited to a follow-up discussion with Tom Schmidt and Nick Tomzak in regards to next steps on ditch 102232. And their potential implementation of alternative four. So I don't know if you want me to carry any... What should I say? Positions as far as the city goes on that?
Well, we're going to be on that meeting, too.
Okay.
So I, I mean, they just sent the agenda out, so didn't really know what the discussion was going to be until like moments ago. But, you know, for me, it's really about trying to understand their rationale behind it because even though I've sat through all those meetings, I'm not sure that what, I don't, I'm not sure any of those alternatives solves the problem. So that's really what I want to hear, is like, what is, how, what's this going to do to solve the problem that we put forth in the beginning, which is, you know, the fact that those properties keep getting flooded out? And I think they're looking for a significant partnership with us, as in dollars.
Well, yeah, and that's, and the fact that you two will be in attendance, I guess, that was going to be my question mark, and I don't know that it has to be answered, but I'm sure they'd be looking for
Yeah.
financial partners in them.
They are. And I surely wouldn't want to sign on for anything, paying for something that we're not even sure is going to do anything. So we'll see what they have to say.
Maybe you could use some of those credits.
Good luck.
More on that later.
That's in regards to which properties?
It's the properties that are down around Pine Street and Zodiac, that area. I mean, there's just been significant flooding on and off over there for years. And it appears to have started once when Joe Drell went in. And so, and there's, there's a whole bunch of factors that weigh into this, so it's really hard to kind of peel away what might be the cause and... But it's, I mean, there's a significant number of people down there that have had property damage and ongoing issues with flooding, not in a year like today, this year, but when there's rain. So anyway, it's, it's a problem.
Thank you.
And the only other update I would have is that construction continues on the Blaine Brothers site and the road improvements. And so they have city sanitary sewer and water main installed in the roadway. I think we'll see storm sewer going in the last half of next week. So they're, they're picking away at the, the road improvements, and obviously the building is, is going up forthright. So anyways, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Attorney report.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, in your packets is a joint powers agreement between the city of Lino Lakes and the city of Columbus. This is proposed in connection with a fairly significant project that would straddle the jurisdictional line between Lino Lakes and Columbus. It would be in the far southwest corner of the freeway district. And I believe all that land was held in common or one property owner. I think that's why it's being sold and developed together. So 55 acres of the development would be in the city of Columbus. I think something like 270 acres would be in Lino, so a much more significant portion of the project. We've had very cooperative discussions with Mike Grishala, the Community Development Director of Lino Lakes. We looked at, I contacted the Environmental Quality Board and said, "What would it take, you know, for Columbus to kind of run a parallel review process?" And it would be much more expensive, it would be, we would basically duplicate Lino Lakes' work on the A U A R. I know you had a little bit of a briefing at your workshop about what an A U A R is, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. An A U A R, Supplants, an E I S, an environmental impact statement. And the advantage of the A U A R is that it considers a longer horizon, it considers phased projects, and it's appropriate for something of this size. If you saw in the recital lines of the agreement, the total development could be as big as 3.5 million square feet of business park, primarily industrial uses. If you want to see something that Scannell Properties has developed recently up in Brooklyn Park, north of the 610 freeway, there's a very significant industrial park that was developed by Scannell Properties. So you can take a look at that. But this is just really the starting point, and we think it makes sense as staff. We've had a couple of meetings at a staff level talking about how we would work through this, these approvals, not only on the A U A R, but also on sewer and water. We've had just a couple of meetings with the developer, nothing really significant proposed at this point in terms of plans and drawings. Certainly, the size of the project is significant. We don't know whether they'll start on the north and work to the south, or start on the south and work to the north. I'm not sure that they even know at this point. They're just trying to get the entitlements in place for a pretty significant project. So this is, we think, a cost-effective way to process the environmental review. We'll have a seat at the table. We'll have the ability to comment and object and so on. We just won't, as a community, since we have the smaller acreage, we won't be leading the, the review process. But in every other way, it'll be essentially our review.
So I left, I must have left my packet at home with my information, but I was looking at that map, and so exactly where is that? Did you say, is it on?
Yeah, the, what is the cross street, Elizabeth? It doesn't show up on our exhibit. I just realized that. But the, nor the, I think the southerly cross street for the Columbus acreage is 180th Street?
Yes, it is. It's 180th in Lino Lakes, and it's for, I believe, in, in Anoka. And then for Columbus, it's, the property's just over the jurisdictional line. So this is the jurisdictional line between Lino Lakes and Columbus, and so just over the jurisdiction line with the Raybines and Olson Property.
Raybines, because I don't know where 180th is.
So for us, if you go, if you go north here, it's Trunkaway 97, you would come down past Loves', and then you would have 145th. You would go Easterly 145th, and then this is Lyon Street.
Okay, okay, now I know.
The jurisdictional border between Washington County and Anoka County.
Okay.
And then all the way down 24th, which is our Lyon Street. And so this street, kind of odd, so it's half in Forest Lake and half in Columbus in Columbus, and it's half in Hugo and half in Lino Lakes.
Oh, boy.
Going all the way down, so a fair amount of communities involved, at least with the north-south route.
So would the one border be along 35E?
Yes.
Okay. I know right where that's at, then. Thank you.
And that's the worst road in Columbus and in Washington County.
35E?
No, the, whatever it is, past Hornsby, past 145th. You can bury a four-wheel-drive truck there in the spring when the frost is coming out. And if this all gets blacktopped and redone, that'll be the biggest improvement in 200 years on that road. So, and I'm not kidding. That's something else, that road.
Mr. Mayor and Council, that, that's a good point in that, parallel to the environmental review, discussions have begun about improvements in both communities to serve the project. And so probably akin to the freeway interchange discussions, it'll probably involve four local jurisdictions, two counties, probably not Mid-Ad at this point, but, but a similar discussion that occurred collectively to get the, the bridge interchange done and the, and the roads that lead from it and to it.
So how many years will this take, do you possibly? Would you surmise?
I, I think the time horizon is 10 to 20 years, but that can always change based on demand. I mean, one of the sectors that has been fairly strong has been industrial in, in recent years, but that can always change. Market conditions can change. So the, you know, probably the longest horizon would be 20 years, but you know, the, the project north of 610 took a lot less than that to fill up. I mean, that's why they're out looking, because that's what they do. This is a national company with, with a very significant local office. And, and so that's what they do, is when they run out of space in one place, they look for the next, next big project.
Well, it's actually a good location for something like that. You know, it's a big chunk of land, and it's close to the freeway, and it's close to the metro.
I think, and too, their, their primary type of style of buildings, like a tip-up, pre-cast building, I think, kind of like what we all wanted to see, right? So, but if you go out towards Brooklyn Park, all them tip-up buildings out there, for the most part, are owned by Scannell. And they typically use R.J. Ryan, who did Viking Industrial, to build them, so.
How about watershed districts? Is that all in Rice Creek, do you know? Or would that be, I, I don't know if, is Forest Lake and Rice Creek watershed?
They're Rice Creek and Comfort Lake.
And, okay, so it should all be Rice Creek?
But it's mostly upland. There's a little corner. I don't know how many acres of wetland, but so it'll all...
Well, hopefully, they don't build a road and block any water going through.
Of course not.
So on the utilities of this, are those, are they just extending up from Lino? Or where, where are the utilities in this area?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, one of the things that we've stated repeatedly in our meetings is that our plans for Columbus Sewer and Water anticipate and plan for connections through our municipal systems. And so while, you know, one of the offers, if you will, was to have extensions from the south, we made it clear in meetings with Scannell that to complete our sewer and water system, this property needs to be connected. Otherwise, you'd end up going quite a bit north, and you'd perhaps miss a couple of properties in between. So that's the sort of thing that we're going to be looking for in the document to make sure that we've been heard, and that's why it's important to have that seat at the table.
And then why is, so the environmental study is studying what? I mean, is it because it's just, it's such a significant footprint? Or is it because of the kind of manufacturing or whatever it is that they're going to do there, or both?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this project, because of its size, a commercial-industrial project of this size trips a review threshold.
Okay.
And it trips an E I S review threshold. We're used to environmental assessment worksheets. That's the lesser document. An E I S is a more extensive document, and an A U A R replaces both. But it will look at the typical things. Traffic is going to be a big one. Probably the biggest issue will be traffic. But also, how is stormwater managed? Where's the sewer and water coming from? What are the key intersections in the area? Are there wetland impacts? Are there air quality impacts? Typically, some of those things we'd answer no to. I mean, air quality would depend on the user, but these are pretty, if you look at the Scannell Business Park elsewhere, they're pretty clean uses. So the, we would expect the biggest impact that's going to be analyzed is traffic. You know, where are they coming from? Where are they going? Which intersections break down at peak hours? That sort of thing.
Okay.
And at the current time, they've, they've looked at zoning, and they feel that they can meet all the zoning requirements.
And that's light industrial there for us?
Well, push them along as best we can, right?
Yep.
For 20 years. We'd like to see it done in 10, not 20.
We won't schedule the ribbon cutting just yet. All right. What else, Bill? Anything more? We just need a motion to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve, oh. All right. Want me to? So, motion to approve the joint powers agreement between the city of Columbus and Lino Lakes relating to the joint environmental review for Scannell Business Park.
I'll second the motion. Is there any other questions or discussion at this point? Ron, go ahead.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye. And Jessie, aye.
And on to the liability coverage waiver.
Bill, I was asked to take this off the consent agenda because there's a couple of council members would like you to go through the, why we would, why would we not waive the tort liability insurance?
And I always appreciate the heads up. So I was able to look at that today, and I actually contacted the league. I mean, I kind of understood the reasons why, because we've been doing this for a number of years, but I wanted to just check in with the league and see if anything had changed. The, so, starting, the starting point is municipalities and other units of government have what are called tort limits, and they're, they're by statute, and they protect government against excessive payouts if someone's injured. So tort is usually an injury, right? And because of that, the league coverage is considered kind of reasonable because it relies on statutory limits. Some cities, usually larger cities, will opt to buy excess coverage, and they go from a total of a million and a half to 2 million coverage. And the reason they do that, at least according to the league, is because they want to make sure if there's a significant injury that, that folks are covered. I'll tell you that one of the statistics that's kind of important in your decision-making is that 83% of cities decline to waive. In other words, they, they rely on the limits in statute rather than buying more coverage. So that's, that's why we have consistently opted to not waive the statutory limits and rather have the, rely on those. They did point out that there's a couple of areas that are not covered as torts, and I'm just going to look. They're like civil rights claims and things like that, the type, the type of claims we have not seen in the city. So it doesn't, it doesn't seem like we need to buy excess coverage because the types of claims that are outside of those statutory tort limits, they, they would be covered by our policies, but they wouldn't be covered by the statutory tort limits. We don't see those types of claims. So larger cities, Minneapolis, for instance, will see civil rights claims with a fair regularity. Now, Minneapolis is self-insured, so they, they don't even, they're not even in the league's program. But that's why larger cities would seek additional coverage.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Real quick, so the Sheriff's Department, they're covered under their own? They're not tied to us, then?
Correct.
Well, if they do something out there, it's the Sheriff's Department's issue, not ours.
That's correct, although I'm sure part of the contract is, part of the cost of the contract is providing for insurance coverage. So I'm sure we get a little piece of that through the, the contract, but absolutely, the coverage runs to the Sheriff's Department. It's purchased by the Sheriff's Department. We're covering acts of the city here, so our public workspeople and anybody who's driving a vehicle that could injure or harm anybody. I will say we have a really good track record, so keep it up. We haven't had to go there. So this is, this is something that it seems prudent for us to have a reasonable cost rather than buying additional coverage. But that's not, that's not my call to make, so.
I'll make the motion to approve liability coverage waiver, not waiving the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota Statute 466.04. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Anything else, Bill?
No, Mr. Mayor, unless I have other questions, unless there are other questions of me.
Then we'll move on to the mayor and city council members' report. And we'll begin with an update by Janet.
I have a suggestion. Start down there so we don't forget, so we don't forget the rest of the... I always talk for so long, and then we forget that other people might have something to report.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Ron, what do you have? Anything for us?
Oh, nothing. I'm just looking at all these papers coming in.
Sue?
So I just wanted to, and everybody probably knows, but Midco is digging in my area and have buried the lines. And I have signed up, so as soon as they're ready to turn on the power, that I am live with Midco.
Hooray!
Let's progress.
Yes. And they finished Lake Drive. I thought they did a really good job. I mean, not only did they do a good job, but they did it quick and with very little disruption, so. Just happy about that.
Rob?
Nothing to report right now.
Okay, now it's my turn. I won't belabor this first one about the Sunrise WMO JPA. There is a copy of a memo, or a letter, I should say, from the Board of Water and Soil Resources, known as Bowser, back to Jamie Sherbonne, who is the administrator for the Sunrise River WMO. And this was in response to our prodding them about weighing in on the issue that we've had with Ham Lake. And in a nutshell, it's not a very happy letter. They're kind of pushing it back on us. And, and having to confer with the state Attorney General's Office. And, you know, the real quest, they, they have been on notice that this has been a problem, and we've been working through a process of reconciling differences of opinions with Ham Lake for close to two years now. But in their own words, they said they didn't really, they always considered it a hypothetical problem until we actually submitted our notice of dissolution. So now they're scrambling to try to figure out what to do with it, and they don't know. And the problem for us as a city is more about how much time and effort and money it continues to take to try to resolve this without leadership from the state. And so on Friday, I have a Zoom call with Jamie and our attorney for the Sunrise River to basically figure out what the next steps are. So I think, this is really just to keep you informed of the process. We've already blown through pretty much all the money that the cities have contributed for legal fees, our initial contribution, and then just the $1,000 that was just made, like, last week. So it's, you know, we've spent over $10,000 just on legal, the organization has spent over $10,000 just on legal fees, just trying to figure out how to do this. And I feel like we made really great progress on updating the JPA document and getting that in place, but to enact it and to resolve the, the problem with Ham Lake, I don't feel like we're any further ahead than we were two years ago. So, Bill, if you have any, if you have any words of wisdom or thoughts you want me to carry forward to Troy on Friday, I'm happy to do that, but that's the sad, sad story as it stands today.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just took a quick look at the statute and verified, you know, one of the last paragraphs said, you know, "It's easy to dissolve. It's harder to kind of put it back together." If, if Ham Lake were to consent to, to covering their jurisdiction, then there's a fairly easy path. I don't imagine they're going to consent with, you know, payments, and that's probably been the rub from day one. So that's all I was able to surmise in kind of one day of review, but...
Yeah, I, I think the, the problem is that they don't, I mean, they want it to be their own WMA or WMO, and statutes don't allow that to happen. So essentially, they either join an existing one, or the county steps in and does it for them. And the county doesn't want to do that, but they will do that if that's what they have, they have to do. And they've told Ham Lake, "It's probably going to cost you more money to pay us to do, to sit at the table for you than to do it yourself." But I think the problem is that nobody's really pushed the issue with Ham Lake. I mean, they've all talked around, like, well, this is, but no one said, "Look, you need to make a decision by this date, what you're going to do." And that's a hard thing for us as a peer community to do, but that's kind of what we, I think we need, and what we've said back to Bowser is that, you know, "We can't continue to kick this can down the road. We need to have a, you know, no, no decision is a decision. So by this date, if there's not a decision, we're going to move ahead." And you know what? That's your problem to figure out with Ham Lake. I don't...
You shifted the burden of that issue to some extent on Bowser. And what I've understood from this letter is, and from the prior commentary, is they didn't expect the cities to go through with this, and you called the question.
Yeah. And I think, I think now that they, they see that we are, they're not sure what to do. And, you know, what we were hoping is that you have a WMO that's been in existence for years and have been doing what they're supposed to do and in good faith, tried to get this resolved. Are you really going to make us start all over again? Are you going to make us start all over again? Are you going to make us do the petitioning and redraw lines and do all that work that a brand-new WMO is going to? I mean, why would you do that? And really, what should happen, in my opinion, is that Anoka County and Bowser should sit down with Ham Lake and figure it out, and then come back and say, "Here's how we're going to solve this problem." Because it's not our job to tell a peer community what they should or shouldn't do, right? I mean, that's not our job. It's the state that, you know, says that as a city, you have to participate in this type of organization. And when they refuse to do so, it shouldn't be the peer communities taking that on. That's, it's not our job to do that. Yet, that's kind of what they've expected. And we tried to, but we didn't, you know, we obviously didn't succeed. And so I feel like the three, the three communities that are trying to do their work and have been working hard and paying to get this resolved are being punished because this fourth community is sitting back on their heels and going, "Oh, we're just going to see how it plays out." And that's exactly what their attorney said, "They're just going to see how it plays out."
Well, do you feel that Ham Lake is just passing the buck? Or not Ham Lake, that the Bowser is just passing the buck on your other three communities?
I just think they, I just think they don't know, this is, there's no precedent for this. And so it takes a lot of time and energy to figure it out, and they'd rather somebody else do that.
That's, that's the, that's what I read in the letter. It's, "Oh, wow, you did this, now we got to figure it out."
And it's like, you knew about it for two years, could you not have put any energy into figuring this out during that time? So now we're going to sit here for another two years, picking up the, you know, picking up the slack from Ham Lake and paying their share of it and everything while you figure out what to do?
I think one of the, one of the issues that were very early on that was pointed out to us was that the law does not contemplate this action, that the law, you know what I mean, and that's what Troy said, there isn't, there isn't anything in the law that says, "What do you do here?" So now, I think that's why they went to the AG's office, because now that, I think they're looking for the AG's office to apply, because the law doesn't contemplate this happening.
And the problem is, the lawyers will be careful and say, "I can't tell you what the law says when it doesn't speak."
Which is, which is exactly what the, what the Bowser attorney said at our meetings. "I'm not, I'm not going to tell you what to do, I can't tell you what to do." And it's like, but you're the state, you're representing the state agency, so how can you not tell us what to do? That you're the ones that say that we have to do this.
Well, you did the one thing that shifts the burden now onto the, onto Bowser and the county. Otherwise, there's, and I called, when I got a heads up about this, I called Marcy at the, Marcy Westrick, to say, you know, "What happens with permitting in the interim? You know, can we issue permits as an LGU?" And didn't get a call back, no surprise, because I don't think they know.
Yeah. Well, and, and we already do, I mean, we already act as the LGU for the Sunrise. So I think from business for the city, it's not going to, it's not going to impact us in a negative way. It's, it's more about the cities required to be under the jurisdiction of a, of a water management organization, and if that water management organization can't do their job because they don't have sufficient funds or, you know, any of that, then, then the city then becomes non-compliant, right? By virtue of the fact that the WMO that we're part of and that we have a JPA for can't do the work. It's more about the, it's more about the Sunrise River being able to do their, their work if they don't, this doesn't get resolved. And the fact that every time we go back and do another volley of conversations with an attorney, it costs money, and that's the cities that are paying for it, not the one that's causing the problem, by the way.
So just, just out of curiosity, is, so now that the JPA is, or there, it's dissolved, does the Sunrise Board not meet because they don't exist?
Well, it's not, it was a 90-day notice, so just because you gave a 90-day notice doesn't mean that at the end of 90 days, it blows up in smoke, you've given them notice. So, I mean, I think we can continue on, but, you know, we don't have a budget that's approved. And heads up for all of you on the budget process, if we don't get this approved, we're going to have to adopt a budget that includes the Ham Lake portion because they're not signing on to this for next year. So that's where that kind of stuff costs each of the cities more money. And I don't know, I don't know how the permitting would work in Ham Lake, if they're not part of the Sunrise, and they've got development or anything that requires a permit and they're the LGU, I don't know how they do that, because then now they're no, they're no longer part of that organization, but I don't know. The good news is I don't think it will affect our city business, other than the cost and me whining about it at every council meeting. So thank you for letting me get that out of my system one more time. Stay tuned. And then the second thing I have is a oral Personnel Committee report. So we have been wanting to take on a bigger project of looking at the city's employee handbook and updating it as required. Elizabeth tells us the last time it was significantly updated was 2018, so it's been about five years. And as you know, there's been a lot of things going on with the legislature that require us to relook at certain sections, like the drug testing and alcohol testing and things like that. So as we've sort of talked about how you go about doing this, I think there were some things that we felt would be helpful to have authority delegated to the Personnel Committee to be able to move forward rather than bringing things back for council approval. And these are things, you know, that, again, sort of recent things have brought to our attention. So for instance, with our summer intern program, we contemplated bringing in a summer intern, but realized that hiring and firing is within the authority of the council. So we couldn't hire the intern without your approval, and so we had a pretty short period of time, and we'd asked for sort of advance authority to go forward with that as we went through the interview process. So that would be one of the things that we would like to change, is that the council would delegate authority to the Personnel Committee to hire or fire seasonal temporary or interns when the costs are covered in the current budget year. So of course, anything that we do that is impactful to the budget needs to have council approval, but if we already have money in the budget or it's not, it's not impacting the budget in any way, and it's a seasonal or temporary position, we'd like the authority to move forward with that, obviously keeping you in the loop on things, but not having to get your approval in advance of the action. So that, that's one thing that, that will be in the motion. The second thing is just to authorize us to go forward and draft amendments to the employee handbook. And so the process for this is that the Personnel Committee would take a thorough look at that, make recommendations for amendments. There's an employment attorney that actually assists Elizabeth with this, and so then he would take it from there and determine whether our recommendations were legally advisable and make the final edits, and then the whole thing would come back to the council for approval. So that, that's the second part of this, this motion. And then the third part, as we've, as we've looked at the employee handbooks and just some sort of procedural things, we realize there are a couple of things that are missing. One of them is a comp time agreement. So again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Elizabeth, but my understanding is that when hourly employees are working overtime, they obviously get paid time and a half for their time, and cities also have the ability to offer them the opportunity of taking that time and a half as compensated time, but you need a, you need a comp time agreement in place to do that, and we don't have that. So we are, we are looking to draft and implement that. And then the second thing is to have a templated separation agreement, so that if there is need to offer that in a case of employees separating, we actually have an approved template that the lawyers have drafted for us, that you can fill in the blanks and then, and then move forward with that. So, so the motion would be to approve delegation to the Personnel Committee for those following act, action items. And before I make the motion, I'll just take any questions that anybody might have.
Well, I was just going to, and as I'm listening to you go through it, it's, you're not giving authority to the Personnel Committee to really do anything without council approval except to be able to hire and fire seasonal or, like, the intern. The rest of it is drafting something that would eventually have to come back to the council for approval.
It would also be executing a, I mean, the executing of this separation agreement would be part of it. So it'd be drafted by the attorney, and then if there was need to execute, the Personnel Committee would be authorized to do that. And the reason for asking for that authority is that oftentimes, these kinds of things come up very quickly, and you need to move on them quickly. And so it, you know, it allows you to do that and to offer whatever the terms of the separation agreement are going to be. So it would be to, in that case, that would be to execute it too, and also to execute the comp time employment agreement.
And the comp time agreement is between the employee, in, in theory, HR, but we don't have, you know what I mean, HR, so really Personnel Committee is acting as HR, and it's, it's a delegation, you just have to have a document, and it has to be executed by someone. And you could have delegated to me too, but I just figured at this point, rather than coming to the council, that would be easier to go to the Personnel Committee.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I would say that this is a recommendation that really goes back to the city's incorporation. Some of our practices are holdover practices from when we were town government. So this was actually part of the recommendations way back when, and it just was never really implemented, that there be a committee, you know, for, for all sorts of privacy reasons, that there be a committee that's empowered by the council to take certain actions. Nothing could be done outside the purview of the council in terms of budgeting, you know, hiring other than seasonal employees. But some of these matters, you know, need to be dealt with confidentially, and if every agreement has to come to the council, you can't do that.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
So, this is Rob, I just have a couple of questions on the overtime thing. So if they were to work the overtime at time and a half, do they in turn get time and a half off in lieu of that? Is that the idea?
The comp time would be at time and a half also, it's just that, I'm assuming you don't have a way to do that right now.
You know, right now, there's, you know, the handbook says you'll do it by agreement. You know what I mean, right now, it's a kind of a handshake, but we're kind of, you know, as we grow, we're kind of beyond that, so it's really now we're to a point where we should have an agreement, like, which one does employees want? Do they want the choice? Like, how we're going to document that? But you do, you're supposed to have an agreement saying, "The employee understands that you have one option or the other, but if you're going to take comp time, there's going to be rules." And, you know, like currently, I don't let people carry overtime, comp time from year to year. You have to take it in the year that you earn it, and you have to work over 40 hours to get time and a half. So if there's a holiday, you know, you might get eight hours of holiday, but you only work 32, you're not going to get overtime. So you might work 35 hours and eight hours holiday, you're not going to get time and a half. So that comp, that, that comp time agreement kind of outlines what the rules are with individual employees, so they understand what the rules are. And it's more, it's not verbal, it's actually written, so you understand what, what you're eligible for.
And so Janet, if I'm clear, that'll be the portion that's brought back to us for final approval on that, with that kind of?
That'll, that'll be brought back, I'm assuming as part of the handbook, it'll be in the handbook, right?
Okay.
The handbook will outline, outline the terms, but the actual contracts will be approved by the Personnel Committee, the way this is written.
Yep. So the, so the terms behind it would be in the handbook that you would approve en masse. But I think, again, to Bill's point, if you're, if you're doing this and you're delegating authority, it's just, it's a more nimble committee to be able to say yes or no to something than bringing it back to the council every two weeks. That's the, and, and it's, it's not done in a public setting.
Okay, yeah, and I guess just if I could add to it, then my major takeaway would be if, if you as a Personnel Committee could take this into account, that you give them the option to actually take the time and a half, or, or bank, per se, what it is, is banking hours, allow them to do either or, right?
I think that, that is the intent, and I think what, what this does is it puts in writing what the rules are if you decide to take it as time back. So, I mean, I've worked for different organizations that have comp time policies, and their, their rules are different. Some you can carry it forward over the years, some you can't. Some you have to take it in the same pay period, some you have, like, in the same quarter, some of them, you know, as Elizabeth said, if you did not work 40 hours, you don't get it in other places. If you just get paid for 40 hours, you take it. So, so I don't know, I don't know what this is, I don't have any predetermined notion. I mean, I'm going to be counting down the attorney to advise on what is legal and what is common practice in a city, and that's what we'll base it on.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just to, I'm restating a point, but it sounds like the Employment Handbook, which you will see and approve, will set forth the rules for the comp, comp time practices, and then just the ability to implement form agreements with each employee is delegated.
Right.
Okay.
If they choose comp time. If they don't, if they want pay, you don't need one.
Right. But so you, so you'll pass on the policy question?
Right.
Within that updated document, and this is just being able to implement that?
Yep.
Makes sense.
Yep.
So if there are any more questions, and I would move to approve delegation to Personnel Committee the following action items, hiring and firing seasonal temporary or interns when costs are covered in the current year budget, draft policy changes for the employee handbook updates, and draft and execute separation agreements, draft and execute comp time employee agreements.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, you second?
You'll second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you, I'm done.
All righty.
Oh, don't.
Public Works.
Oh, don't tell me. I could start talking about Fall Fest, you want me to talk about that? No.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I want to know how many signs are gone missing, other than on my street? Is there anybody else that's stealing signs in the city, other than?
To the best of my knowledge, it's only your street and I don't like drive.
You've got some troublemakers down there.
Not once, but twice?
Twice.
Honestly, because I, I just noticed the one on crossways, and I thought, yay, they got the sign back up. And then I got a text from a neighbor, she's like, "They stole the sign on crossways." It's like, "I just saw it last night, what are you talking about?"
Well, when you drive around and see people's garage doors open, look on the walls in case they're.
So the, so the one thing, I kind of talked to Connor today, I think we're going to post on, on our Facebook account or whatever, that, you know, one, we've put up speed limit signs, and I think at some point in the near future, I'm doing some legwork, so I don't want to talk about it too much at the moment, but I think at some point, we'll probably post that there's potentially been some theft and, you know, keep your eyes peeled for, for any.
City-owned property.
People, so that's, that's kind of where we're at at the moment. But I'm working through some avenues that, that I, that I don't want to talk about at the moment, so.
Were the one, the most recent ones, I know you had talked about setting them in concrete, they didn't dig up the concrete footing and everything, these were not?
They didn't dig it up, they just hooked a chain on it and pulled it out.
But it wasn't concrete?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
So, they're ambitious.
That's one way to put it, yes.
Public Communications Coordinator report.
I just wanted to provide a quick update this evening. It turns out it's midway through July, and with Fall Fest creeping up on us, I realized that we are budgeted for two newsletters this year, and I assumed, I can, requesting verification, that we would like the newsletter to promote Fall Fest.
Oh, yay! I guess we didn't, I didn't, I lost track of the fact that we hadn't done number two, so, perfect.
So with Fall Fest being mid-September, we're looking at about a month and a half turnaround time to get a newsletter pumped out, so that is jumping from a back to a front burner pretty quickly. So as work progresses there, I'll keep you guys updated, but hopefully, we'll be a little bit quicker in, from start to finish, on the, this newsletter than we were in the spring. But I thought the spring one came out really well, so.
Well, that'll be great, because that will go to everybody, and that's a big, a big plus in terms of advertising it.
Right.
Good deal.
Anything else, Connor?
Not tonight.
Right. City Administrators report, Elizabeth.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I became aware a couple of days Mr. Mayor and Council members, I became aware a couple of days ago that after our last city council meeting, the council indicated to our attorney that he was to draft a follow-up letter for the MOU that we drafted many, many years ago, looking at wetland credits with Rice Creek-Watershed District. And unbeknownst to me and our attorney, we didn't realize that it was on the workshop agenda for Monday and there was a fair amount of discussion on the MOU during that meeting. It wasn't favorable for Columbus during that discussion, but I do think at this point, we should still move forward because I think it's important that in this particular case, this was a memorandum of understanding because we all knew that it was very timely in order to get the Howard Lake Bridge done. And in the only way we could move forward without losing any funding was to jointly come together, all parties, and come to an understanding of what each of the parties needed in order to move forward. And while Columbus, you know, put the meeting together, we knew that it was going to be time before we were going to be able to get what I call our win because during that discussion, the intention was that each of the entities, and there were five entities at the time, that we were all going to move forward with, with something. And the one thing that the, the city, meaning Columbus, agreed to in order for the projects to go forward was the acquisition by the DNR for the Don Stanky property, which was five acres of upland, which could have been developed into a home on Lake Drive. We, and it was not in the acquisition plan, but the DNR at the time at Lamprey Pass wanted to acquire that land because of the nature of that particular property going into the lake and they could do some amenities that they wanted to upgrade. And at, at the time, and, and several years later, they did upgrade the parking lot and they, they did some things. They didn't follow through on all the upgrades, but they did do some. So the idea was that Columbus would allow that sale to move forward and then several years later, when wetland credits were established, we were going to get some wetland credits back. And we knew that there were things, you know, projects needed to happen, the wetland credits had to be established. So we knew it was going to be five to 10 years before we were going to be able to get our win. And it appears to me that the Watershed District doesn't understand all of the things that happened because people changed, the parties changed, you know, people involved changed. And, and I'm not sure that they truly understand from the discussion they had on Monday, all of the details, let's just say, of the understanding. This wasn't, this isn't Columbus trying to take something away from Rice Creek. This is Columbus saying, you know, we had a five acre lot that could have had a house on it and we could have built a brand new house on it and had taxes on it. And we chose to allow the DNR to purchase it outside of the acquisition agreement, which the acquisition agreement, for those of you who don't know, Carlos Avery and Lamprey Pass have plans of what parcels the, the city and the DNR agree to, how they could purchase property over time. And this was outside of that agreement. So again, this was, this was our part saying, you know what, we understand the bridge is important, Howard Lake Bridge is important. We knew, we knew all of those things were important at the time. And so it's, it's unfortunate that Columbus was going to, willing to wait for our win, but now we get to the, we get to the point where we're, we're, it's our, it's our opportunity. And now, and I realize the MOU is not binding, but at the time, we all realized that because we couldn't do a formal agreement in that short period of time. So I feel strongly about saying, going back and saying, and talking to those who really don't understand the, the details and, and pressing further. Now, if the council feels that it's not worth moving forward, it's, you know, up to three credits and it's not worth spending the time, then certainly we, we won't move forward in, in trying to pursue it. And I'm not saying we're going to gain success, but I think it's worth at least the extra effort.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just pulled up the letter because I wanted to confirm the, the most recent letter. So there's now been two sent to the district. And the, the last line of the letter says, please let me know when this matter will be brought back to the managers for direction and further action. And I don't know if we're playing a game by bringing it to a workshop because that's not action, but it's, it's, you know, I would cry a little bit of foul here that they're having a discussion about our request and we're not notified and to sit in the audience and listen in. Because as you know, it's a lot harder to take an action against somebody when they're sitting in the chairs.
Correct. I was able to zoom into it and Janet was listening on the telephone. So how do we move forward, counselor? Everyone, one person on that board understands it and four people don't know what they're talking about. And how do we lay out the facts? And I wasn't at the meetings, but you both were and Mel Metler, the former mayor, was there. Pat was there as the chairman, I believe. And everybody worked together to make this happen within a day or a week or a month because the federal money was involved and they wanted Brown's Preserve and the DNR wanted Stanky Property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But all of this is washing over their head. They don't even know what they're talking about. They don't know the locations. They don't know what deals, or not deals, but what promises were made. So how do you, how do you? And then, yes, so they throw it in at a, at a workshop that we just accidentally found out about because we're paying attention to it. And I think we're about three years late on pinning down the watershed. But how do, how do you go about, how does the city go about with your expertise to lay it all out on paper and let them tell us that we're not telling the truth because we are?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to kind of mine my words a little bit here, but it seems to me that the chair and the administrator are kind of controlling the discussion.
Correct.
And, and keeping, you know, folks who are decision makers from the facts. So in my private sector life, you know, we do things called, you know, lobbying. We meet one-on-one with decision makers and, and tell our story. That is time-consuming. It's, if it's me, it's expensive. But, you know, perhaps, perhaps we need to spend a little bit of time with Pat Priner, Mel Metler, Elizabeth and myself. We were all participants in the discussion. Collect, collect the story. I was given very little opportunity to really tell the story. It was at the end of a long meeting and the chair was controlling, you know, how much discussion could occur and, you know, stopping commissioners or members from talking. So I think, I think the, the only way we get around this is to go to individual decision makers and tell them the story. And that's, that's how I would do it if I was, if I was trying to get a project approved in this community and, and wasn't your city attorney. I would, you know, ask for meetings with you individually and, and try and tell our story so that, so it's not filtered. I, I don't know any other way to do it because as Elizabeth says, the agreement's non-binding. You're not going to sue the Watershed District on a non-binding agreement. I don't think you'd probably sue the Watershed District even if you had a binding agreement just because you've got to work and play well together. But it is fairly frustrating that, that two individuals seem to be keeping this really away from a decision. Now, I'd like to, I'd like to see if there was some action, there was a discussion at the workshop. Was there any action that followed? Did they say that?
They directed the administrators to formulate a letter and then bring it back to the board for review and then they would send it out to us.
And it sounded like they wanted it done sooner rather than later, so I don't know. They had a board meeting today. Did they have the letter there? Do you know, Sue?
I don't think so.
So I, I, my guess is it will be done by the next board meeting in two weeks. And I also, I got, I requested a link to the audio version and I got that, so I can share that with you if you want to hear it. But, you know, it was, it was quite negative and a lot of misinformation. And to be honest, Columbus was painted in a pretty negative light in, in the, in the words of the chair. He really, you know, said, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why they're coming forth. They didn't really do anything other than not stand in the way of a land sale. And now they're asking for these credits that are, you know, because it's been in the news how, how spent or how valuable they are. And it just, there was just a lot of wrong information put forth by him and not so much by Nick, but Nick didn't really correct the record. And, and I do think you're right that there's at least two members and maybe three members on that board that I think if they had the right or the correct information, they would not support. I, I think they would be more favorable towards, towards at least sitting down and talking to us. I mean, that's, to me, that's the thing that's disheartening is that you've requested twice now, time with them and they have completely, you know, blown that off. So, I mean, they, they have not even felt it worth their time to engage in a meeting.
Right. That's, that's really, I mean, I think you, you summed it up well, is that they are just holding us off because if they have to sit down and talk to us, then they've got to acknowledge our position and that there's something to negotiate over. Perhaps to, you know, if, if it's going to, and you're probably right that it's going to be turned around in two weeks because they just want to, you know, tell us to go away. I don't think it's efficient for me as your attorney to, to meet with individual members. I think that what we should do is we should get a call with Pat Priner, Mel Metler, Mayor Priner, and marshal our facts and story the best we can. We'll come up with some talking points and then we'll ask individuals on this council if you're willing to reach out to one or more of the members. And, and that way, that way, you're all talking from the same sheet. Even though you weren't there, you've got the collective memory of all of us. And then you're doing what electeds do and reaching out to other, other appointed, right? Other decision makers.
I'd be happy to do that.
I think it might also be helpful, I mean, we can, we can listen to the audio because I think if we can pick out specific quotes that were said that were clearly wrong and then provide the correct information, I think that will be really powerful because they, you know, that's what they're hearing. They don't have the alternative viewpoint on that. And so if they, if they know that, you know, their chair or their administrator said this, but, you know, the record shows this, I, I think that that will really help clarify things for them.
And, and I think that, you know, you've got at least some sympathy on that board. You've got the chair kind of leading the discussion and curtailing the discussion. I think if, if you're, if you're successful in telling the story, you could change a couple of minds and that, as you know, that's all it takes. Couple of votes. So I think for our part, Elizabeth and I can help put together pretty quickly that, that talk, it'll be a one-sheeter like we do at the legislature, one-pager, and you'll all have the same script and then you just decide who's willing to call, you know, contact whom.
Do you think, Bill, that you would be able to put dates? I mean, not just talking points, but May 1st, they call and said, we're going to put in a new bridge in Forest Lake. We have to have this project done in two weeks or we lose all our money. May 15th, you call a meeting, Elizabeth hosts everybody, they start dealing back and forth. May 20th, they said, okay, we'll allow them to take Brown's Preserve and Stanky can sell his land to the DNR. They get to build the bridge. Columbus has to wait for their wetland credits, which weren't credits for five or whatever years, so that these people who really have no idea what they're talking about can see it wasn't just willy-nilly Columbus grabbing, grabbing property for development is how they painted it so far. It is, we allowed Rice Creek to obtain that 80 acres that made them 60 or 80 credits, 60 I think it was. It allowed the bridge to be built in Forest Lake. It allowed the Howard Lake Bridge to be built. It allowed the DNR to get what they wanted and, and here they're quibbling over what they, what we all agreed that we would have. But it has to be, in my mind, for the new people, well, for the all new. There isn't anyone there that was ever a part of it, I don't think.
I think you're right.
Unless Steve was on there.
No, no. I, I don't know about John Waller.
He said on the, on the meeting yesterday that he hadn't been on the board. He was, he was keeping track of what was going on, but he was not a board member at that time.
And so that you were at the meetings, you know where they were, what time it was, who was there, what was said, and it's all true and it's all the facts. And if they still deny us, well, we'll know, we'll know that.
Mr. Mayor, the, the best record is that the set of meeting minutes, it really does a good job of laying it all, all out. What we're going to do is condense that and then we're just going to check with the recollections of Mel Metler and Pat Priner. So that's fairly easy to do. I'm going to be taking the, the, you know, the, the meeting minutes that were attached to the MOU. Elizabeth will provide any corrections against what was recently said yesterday and we'll get it in your hands early next week.
I think when you talk to Pat too, it'll be really helpful to find out what board action was taken on their part because one of the statements that Chairman Bradley said was, well, this was, this was a Pat Priner thing. I mean, you know, the board didn't approve it, she did. I don't believe that, but, I mean, again, those kinds of words carry a lot of weight with the rest of the board members. So if there's minutes that show that, yes, this was brought before their board and they did approve it, that would, I think, be helpful that it wasn't a Pat thing.
Yeah, the MOU was definitely, I mean, we can, we can correct that. The MOU was definitely approved by all four agencies that came to the table. The, the difficulty, I'm just going to say it, the difficulty is there was no negotiation around how many credits and when. It was, it was a handshake, basically. It was a good faith understanding, there was trust involved. And, and, you know, that's the difficulty this many years later.
Yep.
And we were, and, and the point I tried to make in the last letter is we were put off two separate times, maybe three in between when we, when we tried to bring this up. Well, it's not time yet. It's not time yet. Now, apparently, it's too late.
Almost to the point where we sent Larry down there to apply because we wanted to, where Loves is today, when they bought that property closest to the, the interchange off Hornsby Street, we wanted to do what they call a shovel-ready parcel. And we tried to apply for that. We tried to apply for a Rice Creek permit saying we wanted to use the credits because that is where we wanted to use the credits in that district so that we could replace the income from the five acre lot, you know what I mean, with this one and a half acre lot. And we were basically rejected saying that until you have a project, you couldn't, they wouldn't give us a permit and they wouldn't do anything shovel-ready. And Nick knows that because he was the one at the table saying that he wouldn't process the permit because we didn't have any development. And he knows that, which is why I was a little frustrated because he knows that we, you know what I mean, we sent someone down to do something and, and at that time, they were like, you don't have a development, the credits are not ready. I mean, so I almost want to call him and say, you need to pull that, you need to pull that up again because that was significant. It's not like we weren't, we weren't there and that we didn't try to do something and put it on the record.
I think to Jesse's point, I mean, one of the things that I heard over and over again on Monday was, it's been 17 years, which it hasn't been, but it's been 17 years and they, and they're just bringing it up now. So to be able to say, well, we came to you, you know, we, we couldn't come to you until you actually purchased the property, established the wetlands and got the wetland credit, that was this, you know, 10 years, 10 years later. So of the 14 years or 15 or whatever it was, 10, we couldn't even ask you for them because you didn't have them yet. And then after that date, you had one or two other contacts. And if you can even put in approximate timeframe, I think, again, it shows that we weren't just sitting there forgetting about it and then somebody saw something on the news that went, hey, don't we have some watershed credits we should go after with Rice Creek? I mean, it, it isn't, it didn't happen that way, but that is certainly how it was presented on Monday.
Well, we'll work as quickly as we can. I'll take the first cut and run it by Elizabeth. And maybe the easiest thing to do is to send it, you know, send a draft to Pat and Mel to see if they have any different, you know, recollection rather than spending time trying to set up a meeting and that always takes time and then we've got to kind of transcribe what they said, so.
And I think they've kind of had a heads up. And I think they've kind of had a heads up, right? You talked to both of them, Jessie? You talked to Mel, and you talked to Pat about this problem?
I told Mel he didn't reply.
Okay.
But then they had run into each other and discussed it, so I believe he will be replying. He said he's just really busy right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just as we talk through the next steps, Elizabeth and I will work on the, you know, the Q and A, you know, the basically the one-page statement of facts, and provide any supporting documentation. It'll look, it'll look like what we've sent, you know, but you'll have, you'll have those materials in front of you, and then we'll just need to hear from you individually who's willing to make what call.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any more good news, Elizabeth?
Okay, so the second thing is, I just again want to announce that the 2024 budget workshops will be on August 8th and September 12th. Not that we won't have other meetings, but the kickoff meeting will definitely be at the workshop on August 8th at 5:30. And knowing that our preliminary levy needs to be submitted by September 30th, and unfortunately for us, we got a letter from our new auditor a couple of weeks ago indicating that they had lost several of their staff, and they were having issues completing all of their audits on time. So they drafted an email to me indicating that 75% of their audits that they had worked on this year were not complete, and that I had to file for an extension, which I did. And I was granted an extension through the state of, the state auditor's office till August 15th. So we're still working with our auditor to complete our 2022 audit, and it's rather unfortunate that whether you're an auditor, or whether you're a city, or in any government trying to get accountants and accounting staff is just tough, and, again, they lost a few staff. And rather than telling clients that they won't be able to complete audits, meaning dropping them, they're trying to keep their clients and just ask, and basically ask for a six-week extension. They did go to the auditor's office and let them know that, that that's what they were doing. And so I think between our extension and them talking to the auditor's office, they granted them six weeks for all of their audits, and they represent lots of cities. So we're hoping that we're going to be complete by then, and, but it just, what happens with us is, you know what I mean, we're, we rely on 22 numbers, and we think we have, you know, good numbers, but there's no, they're, they won't be audited, numbers, when we start. So just an update there. And then lastly, I had a meeting today, just looking at Fall Fest and the progress, and they're putting together some great activities. And in order to be timely with contracts, I'm asking that the council delegate authority to me to sign contracts, because at this point, if we have to wait two weeks in between signing contracts for several activities, there won't be activities on September 15th because we only have a few meetings, and people, generally, when you're signing, they want you to sign along with deposits pretty quickly in order to have those types of things happen at Fall Fest.
Mr. Mayor and Council, is there a particular budget for Fall Fest, so your, your authority's prescribed by that?
We have, excuse me, we have $3,000 of city funds budgeted for that, and then we are starting to get our sponsorship funds right now. So right now, with the combination of the funds that we've been budgeting and this, we pretty much got the whole thing covered. I think there'll be more, I think we'll have significantly more sponsorship funds coming in. So I'm not worried about the dollar figures at all.
But we should, for the motion, for, when there's a delegation motion, we should probably have a, you know, maximum of five or 10 or some number.
Mm-hmm.
So anything above that would have to come back to the council.
So I would say, and I, when I kind of figured out on the back of a envelope where we were at, we were somewhere a little over $6,000, and I think we have $3,000 budgeted, and we have $2,500 that's come in the door so far.
So the authority could be $6,500 or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be fine. If we need to come back with more, we can. So I will make that motion. So I would move to approve a delegation to the city administrator to sign contract agreements for the 2023 Fall Fest activities, up to a total of $6,500.
And this is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
I have nothing further.
On to Letter E, announcement and reminders. Planning Commission on July 19th at 6:00. City council meeting on the 26th at 6:00. Planning Commission on August 2nd. How can we be on August already? At 6:00 PM, and the calendar meetings is on the back. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. If there's nothing anyone would like to add, is there a second?
It's Rob's second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone.